Okay, it looks like we're at six o'clock and we're waiting for Linda.
That's correct. Hey Linda.
Okay, so we are all present and accounted for. Yeah, I would like to call to order the regular session of the Manzanita City Council on this day, March 8th, 2023 at six o'clock. First, I would like to offer a thanks to Dan at Public Works and all of his crew for making the roads passable in the last snowstorm. Hopefully, that won't happen again for a while. Maybe we can get into spring now, but the folks there did a fabulous job and there were a lot of comments that came in. Very appreciative, so thank you to Dan and his crew. Like to have an approval of the agenda. Just a protocol, please. Somebody approve the agenda as it stands and-
Turn that off in here.
Pardon?
Sorry, that was me. I'll prove it.
Are we okay? Okay, thank you. And is there a second? Thank you. Next, we will approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the February 8th work session, the February 8th regular session, and the February 15th special session. Were there any adjustments or comments to those, or can we just go for approval?
It does it right.
The approval of bills too.
And the approval of bills. Thank you.
Oh.
Brad was out of motion and Jenna, thank you for the second. Okay, we are ready for any public comments for items that are not on the agenda. I will remind folks that there is a three-minute time limit at this portion, and this is not a time when council members can engage with the participants. We're going to ask that you first state your name and your address for the record, and I see several hands up. Leila, does Nancy take care of that? Okay, so Nancy, go right ahead.
Yes, Mayor. First, we have Karen Small. Go ahead.
Hi Karen.
This is a compliment. A few weeks ago, I sent an email to the council and the mayor requesting that it be put on the agenda, that council take a deep dive into the water report and the other reports concerning water. And right away, I got an email back thanking me from the mayor, and thank you. And soon after that, I got a thank you from Councilman Spigman, and then one from Linda Kowalski. And then it wasn't too long after that that the city manager contacted me and said she was happy to answer any questions and that she had put that for a working group in April and invited me to come and meet with her, which we're going to do the 17th, March 17th. So I feel heard, and I think that's how democracy works.
Ah, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being so active in the water and making, making us all be aware of what's going on, so appreciate your comments.
All right, next we have, excuse me, Kayleen Weiniger? Weiniger? I'm sorry.
Kayleen, hello. Are you there, Kayleen? I think you might be muted, maybe?
It looks like she is muted.
Yeah. Can we unmute her?
Yeah, I just pushed the button and asked her to unmute. Maybe she stepped away?
Oh, there she goes. There she goes.
Okay.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now, right?
You are, you are.
Thank you. This is Kayleen Weiniger. I live at 37 Portland Avenue, and I'm just calling in to council as kind of a reminder of something I read lately about council rules and procedures. I know you have a couple important votes to take tonight, and I was looking in Chapter 6 under Rules and Procedures, and I'd like to read what it says. Under Public Comment, it says, "The public shall be entitled to comment on all matters before the council that requires a vote. Each member of the public is entitled to comment on the matter before the council for five minutes." Just wondering if that will be happening tonight because I missed it in a couple previous sessions, so I'm hoping that we are doing that.
Yes, it is in the script. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
All right, next we have Kelly Roy.
Hi Kelly.
Hi, everyone. This is Kelly Roy. I live at 235 Fifth Street North. I just wanted to let you guys know about a few great opportunities to get involved in some community events and projects. First up, just a reminder that March 31st is Manzanita Day.
Right.
Officially proclaimed, and the Hoffman Center for the Arts and the Wonder Garden are having a plant sale and a speaker. Native Manzanita plants, as well as native wildflowers, will be available for sale from 11 to 2:00, and then David Perry will be speaking at 2:00 PM. All the information about that can be found on the Hoffman Center website, which is hoffmanarts.org. Also, on March 21st, from 5:30 to 7:30 is the Pine Grove Community House Potluck. If you're not a member or have not renewed your membership, you can do that on the Pine Grove website, thepangrove.org. Our guest speakers will be Mark Johnson and Gail Nelson of the Nahalem Bay Health District, speaking about the $10.25 million May bond measure for a new health center and pharmacy, renovation of existing skilled nursing and rehab center in Wheeler. Membership and RSVP is required for that. And then finally, the Nahalem Bay Garden Club is having a work party at the Nahalem Post Office on March 25th from 10:00 to 4:00 PM. And if you're interested in volunteering, you can contact me. My email's kelly, K-E-L-L-E-Y, at artdesign, the letter X, the word change, dot com. So thank you for letting me share those with everyone and have a great meeting.
Thank you, Kelly. We hope we have a good turnout at each one of those important events. Next up is, I think-
Next, we have Mark Huesner.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. I wanted to comment with the Manzanita budget session coming up. I wanted to be sure that all Manzanitans are on the same page since we'll be discussing income and expenditures. I think it's important we know where our money comes from and where it goes so we can participate as informed citizens. At the special city council meeting last month, it was mentioned that the main source of city income is from grants with a nod to infrastructure support. In addition, the city of Waldport was mentioned as looking for $20 million in grants. I researched where Oregon cities get money. The big three revenue sources for cities turn out to be property and other taxes, utility fees, and loans or bonds. Grants tend to be either one-time or related to specific projects. While Waldport has some current grants, their current budget states they're going to be borrowing $20 million over the next 10 years to pay to update their antiquated water and sewer system. Their regular revenue sources are also very different from Manzanitas, relying heavily on property taxes and very little on SPR taxes. Given this and other information you can find in their budget, Waldport's either a cautionary tale or not relevant as a model for Manzanita to follow, perhaps both. I look forward to the recommendations of our own Revenue Diversification Subcommittee. I'm also glad to see serious work moving forward on the system development charges. For those interested in learning more, you can listen to the audio of a presentation from just today at the city council work session where the finances were discussed in great depth. Thanks to the city council, the mayor, the manager, and the budget committee for doing all this hard work. Bye.
Thank you, Mark, for sharing your thoughts and putting things on the record. Are there any other hands up, Nina, Nancy?
No, there is not.
Okay. Next, the city manager's report. Leila had requested that this be moved up on the agenda, so we'll turn the floor over to her.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I did request that this get moved up on the agenda, and I'm hoping to do this as we move forward. The reason for that is, and in past practice in other cities I've worked in, there are sometimes things that come up during public comment that we don't respond to during this meeting, but I thought that the city manager report would be a good opportunity to respond back to folks if there was something that we should be responding to. So having to wait till the very end of the meeting seemed like a long time for folks to, to wait with bated breath for what I have to say. But I think that if we're going to try to do that, my suggestion would be to do that upfront. So I appreciate flexibility, and unless there's any objections, I'll just proceed with that for future meetings. Is that cool? Okay. Well, so then I'll just start, start with one. I'm going to share my screen here. I did want to respond to one comment that was made last week, last month, I apologize, about, there was a statement made that Underhill Plaza is in the landslide and tsunami zone, and I think those of you who've been paying attention to city council meetings long enough to know that I, I really care about data and using accurate information when we make statements like that. And so I just wanted to do this as sort of a public service announcement to really get everyone to understand and know exactly what is going on. So that statement reflects this map, which you see, which was part of our resiliency study that was conducted in 2018. I wasn't here when that study was done, but since that time, because this was brought up, we did some further investigation, and I talked about this in detail at the February 15th meeting about City Hall, but I wanted to bring it here too, just for folks that may not have attended that meeting. This data set is actually something, and Counselor Kozlowski can probably jump in here too, that isn't normally used to do analysis. And so what we did was we consulted with Dogami and Dr. Jonathan Allen, who is an expert, a geomorphologist with a PhD in this stuff, and asked him, is this right? And the answer was no. We actually are not within a landslide zone. The, this is actually the map and data set that we should be using to look at that. So what's posted in that, that analysis, that resiliency study is, I would say incorrect. This is the data that Dr. Allen pointed us to, which is a statewide landslide information layer for Oregon. You can see the area that has the blue star on it. That's the Underhill Plaza site, and what this shows is areas that are potentially susceptible to landsliding require further study. And as you can see, Underhill Plaza is clearly outside of that area. We also had looked at two other city sites, so I just wanted to point that out, that this is the old city hall on, on Lameda, and then the current temporary city hall in the police building. Police building is, so most of our facilities are outside the landslide zone. Linda, did you want to add anything to this while I'm on it?
You described that beautifully. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to talk about is tsunami inundation, and so this was something I learned was very good lesson, which is that there's kind of a couple of different measures that scientists look at to determine what the tsunami inundation zone is, and I think we as a city have been talking about them interchangeably, and they're kind of different. So there's what we call a building design zone and then an evacuation zone. So the building design zone is accessed here, and you can see the area indicated by the star is Underhill Plaza, so it's well outside of the design zone. That means if the area, if the building falls within, or the site falls within this design zone, we actually have to design our essential facilities to a much, much higher standard. So folks might be familiar with what's happening with the city hall in Cannon Beach. It falls within this zone. The current building we're in is right on the border. The building I'm in is actually in the zone, but Underhill's well outside of it. And then finally, and this just kind of zooms in and shows you where the current police station is, and the current city hall is being inside that zone. The second type of measure is what we look at as the evacuation zone. So when Dogami does their modeling, this zone is what they call the extra, extra-large zone. So it's like what the models assume is like the furthest extent that the tsunami can reach, and so we designed the evacuation areas around that. So we try to get people outside of this massive, this is the extra-large zone. And so you can see very clearly from here that Underhill Plaza is way outside of that zone. It's actually in the outside hazard area zone, and so one of the intents behind purchasing that property for a city hall was to provide a gathering space for the community. So that's my story. I just wanted to share that because again, sorry, I have to look under my thing here to stop sharing. I just wanted to share that so that just people in the public are understand, know, and actually have the real data in front of them. So appreciate the comments, and hopefully that information helps illuminate facts a little better. Just a couple of follow-ups I would normally provide in my updates. So I mentioned at a previous meeting that we were working with TCBAs of the Tillamook County Visitors Association on a grant to get Mobi mats. So those are those mats that you slap down on the sand and folks can roll their wheelchairs down. That, that would have required a partnership with us and Oregon Parks and Recreation because it's actually their land that we'd be putting this on. None of the mats would actually fall onto city property. OPRD declined to participate for lots of good reasons related to risk management, liability, and maintenance. We need a partnership in order to do this, and so what we did is we worked with T CBA and Nan and her group, and there's an anonymous donor that is interested in working with the city of Manzanita in particular to provide what they call David's Chair, which is a very accessible motorized wheelchair. So we're in the process of working with the anonymous donor, with the T CBA, to see if we can find a location to store that at the visitor's center. So that'll be the trade-off that we're working towards. And so I'm grateful that we have someone who's willing to pay for that, and as always, T CBA has been just at the, at the table with us to help us work through that issue. So I just wanted to share that with the community. It was disappointing for all of us, but the logistics of those Mobi mats is extremely labor-intensive, given the amount of accretion that we have on our sand and our beaches with OPRD's risk management folks really not having an interest. I don't believe it's in the best interest of the city to assume that liability. There's also a swath of land that's kind of what we call no man's land. We don't actually know who it belongs to, and so there's some just logistics that make it really challenging. So I'm hopeful that the David's Chair will be a good alternative. And T CBA gave us two, I think, other beach wheelchairs last year, so. And the other thing is, I heard from Nan today, and they're wrapping up the destination management plan, and my hope is, is that we'll be presenting that to council in April. So more on that to come. I think folks are aware that the hotel project that was appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba has issued a decision and has remanded that back to the city. I am in the process of working with the city attorney to determine timeline and next steps. There's some specific things that we have to do with respect to our code that I need to understand better. And so once I have that information, I will be working with the city council and setting out a timeline for that hearing. So more on that to come. Just another reminder to folks too, to fill out the short-term rental survey, it's on the front page of our website, so please do that. I also wanted to mention too, that the chief of the parade, which is Counselor Mayor Lee, has been working, I know, with the volunteers for coordinating the Fourth of July Parade. We're looking at the money side of it on our end. There are some specific things that we have to do, but we'll be coordinating with Brad and those folks to see if there's a way that the city can accept donations. Like most things, it's not as easy as you might think, but we're working on it, so more on that to come. I just wanted to give a shout out that we have a part-time Public Works position that's been open for six months now, and we'd love somebody to come work for us. We're awesome to work for. It's actually a benefited position. We, I changed that last year. It's a .6 FTE position. You get to work with can, so much cool stuff. So please, if you're interested, that's up on the city's website as well. And then I'll just end with courts on the 17th, Friday, and we are going to be holding a planning commission meeting on the 20th. There are no applications before the planning commission. It'll be a reprieve of the T S P presentation, so if you missed that and you want to see it again, you can either watch the video or come to the new planning commission and then just introductory activities for those folks to get to know each other. And there's a training folks will be attending later in the month as well. So I thank you for the time, and I'll yield back the floor.
Leila, will that training be in March or will that be in April?
The, so there's a training that the league is doing that we've reached out to the planning commission first, and I believe it's March 27th.
Is that, I, I know at one point there was a training session with the city council and the planning commission together. Is that the one you're talking about?
That hasn't been scheduled yet. No, this was a special training that LSC did, and it seemed like a great opportunity for the planning commission to participate. And if members of council want to go, just let me know.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for Leila? Okay, next we'll proceed to the Red Cross proclamation, and I believe we have Janay, is it Mushin?
Mushin.
Mushin, I was close. Janay, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having me. I definitely, I want to say thank you to the mayor, city council, and staff for, you know, giving us the opportunity and proclaiming March Red Cross Month.
There is a proclamation that needs to be read out loud, so if you will bear with me, I'll go into my old teacher's voice. "In the times of crisis, people in Manzanita come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit in part is the foundation of our community and is exemplified by the American Red Cross Cascades Region volunteers and donors. In 1981, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Manzanita, who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. In the Cascades Region, serving Oregon and Southwest Washington, the contributions of more than 2,500 local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. The Red Cross does so by providing more than 600 emergency overnight shelter stays, along with food and comfort for families devastated by nearly 800 local disasters like home fires. Through the generosity of those donating more than 182,000 units of essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease. Or by supporting service members and veterans an average of nine times a day along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life. And by helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. Their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, 'You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it.' We ask others to join in this commitment to give back in our community. And now therefore, I, Deb Simmons, Mayor of the City of Manzanita, a municipal corporation in the county of Tillamook in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Manzanita to reach out and support its humanitarian mission and in witness thereof-
So it's based people getting-
And, and with consent of the city council and the city of Manzanita, I hear, have here unto set my hand on this eighth day of March 2023. Janay, did you have something else to add to the proclamation?
One of the things, no, thank you, but I, one of the things that I want to remind everyone, as you know that disasters are, we have all kinds of disasters, but one of the main disasters are fires. And one of the important things that I'm not sure whether a lot of us know is that we have sound, what we call a sound the alarm. We install free smoke detectors for people to them, and we are trying to team up. We are trying, we're teaming up with Cl辛 County, the certs right now. We're going to be training them and teaching them how to install smoke detectors for people to need, and as you know, fires are one of the main disasters. So if you guys know of anybody that needs a, you know, smoke detector, so if they need to be checked, please contact me directly, and we can start setting that up, and I will be contacting your certs and see if they would like the training so we can partner up and bring this important service to, you know, to our counties. So, yeah, I thought that was pretty important. Now, May is normally Sound the Alarm proclamation, so I will be coming back to you guys on that.
Okay, well, thank you very much for giving us your time and for the very important work that you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Goodbye. The first item on the agenda under new business is item A, the 2021 audit. There was a letter in the packet from the Acuity Certified Public Accountants that will be explained by Leila and Nina, who is the accounting manager. I think I have that right?
No, thank you. And I also want to invite Corey Sarrett, who is our auditor to join with us. Hey Corey. I'm gonna hand it over to Nina, but I do want to say the 2021, 22 audit was a challenge for us. We went through a major conversion right in the middle of the year, and so Nina and Corey will go over that. But I did, before I did kick this off, I did want to acknowledge that the reason why we have an audit is because of the diligence and hard work of Nina, and of course, our auditor. But I think our auditor would agree that the backend work that Nina did to make sure that all of our resources down to the penny were accounted for really helped our auditor get through what was a very painful and arduous process due to the conversion. And so it was because of Nina's diligence and meticulous work that we were able to get this done. So it was hard, but we are very confident in now having the software in place and being in a much better position, but we got through it. Everything was accounted for, and we kind of came out fairly unscathed, given the level of effort. So I just want to acknowledge that we wouldn't be here today without Nina, and so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Nina to introduce the audit, and Corey, thank you.
Thank you. As Leila said, we just completed our audit for fiscal year 2122 last month, and we have Corey here today to present the findings and sort of help explain some of those hardships that we suffered, and we did suffer.
And with that, Nina, is that where you want me to take over?
Yes. I pass it off to Corey.
Thank you for having me tonight. So I'll echo what the lady said. It was tough. The software that you've converted to that we begged for years for you to consider converting to software that was better suited to a city of your size. It, it, there were more bumps. You always anticipate bumps. There were more bumps. Nina realized that there were some issues, and that's, like Leila said, she's the reason that we were able to kind of get everything finished finally. She realized there were issues in, starting in April, but it was working through those, and then the audit started, and once we started, you know, then more issues that she knew the surface of them, but she did a great job of digging into and being able to show us, no, this is the right number, and this is the right number, even though it didn't feed to the right place as we converted, it's right. And so the pretty thing about this is that, yes, the 2122 was difficult, but Nina developed some great processes out of this audit to really make sure, really, she developed an understanding of the way that the software is processing transactions, and then she developed processes to make sure that this doesn't happen again, but also that served them, serve you better as a city with this new software. with this new software. So it was painful, like she said, but at the same time, that's a really neat way to learn. You know, she she did a great job of turning it into a positive. And so, um, so I'm hopeful that when I'm talking to you next, this this December, it's 2023, um, that um, it's gone much smoother and and we don't have these same issues. Um, there were two findings for, um, what we call minimum standards. It's what Oregon requires us to look at. Um, the first one was that you just had a handful of over expenditures. Two of those were directly related to the conversion and a few issues that Cassell said, you know, this is fine. Don't worry about it. But in budget law world, it did matter. And so those, I think we can move past as not being systemic. The other one was a debt service. What you expected to pay in debt service versus what the USDA pulled were two different numbers, and it just happened to be $700 higher. And so there was an over expenditure in debt service. Um, and we already had a conversation about making sure that that has a tiny bit of a cushion in it. So if that happens again, you're not over expended there. Um, and then the second one, it's one of those times where you don't want to say it was so-and-so's fault, but Oregon doesn't allow you to spend out of contingency. You get to budget for contingency, but you don't get to spend out of it. If you need the contingency money, you have to transfer from it into other appropriation categories, which you did appropriately as a council last fiscal year. But when it got put into the software, it's, it looked like you had spent money out of contingency. And the reason that happened was, again, Cassell said, oh, you just do it this way. And we have begged them to stop telling people in Oregon they can spend out of contingency because there are states where you can. You just can't in Oregon. And so, so they always go, but in Utah, it's fine. And we're like, but we're not in Utah, you know? So and they're not the only software company that does this. We have another one that's based in Kentucky that we work with that. We're like, you have to stop telling people that this is okay. So, um, great learning experience. Um, using contingency, um, you did the resolution appropriately. It was just what showed up at when we got there for audit was was not allowed. So you won't see that in the actual audit report because we fixed it to do the financial reporting correctly. But because it was sitting there, that recommend or the finding still happened. Um, so to talk about numbers, I just wanted to go over those real quick. Um, governmental funds, the or the general fund, um, is up to 2.3 million in fund balance. Um, you have about one and a half million in expense every year. So you're, um, over a year's worth of fund balance. We love to see that. Uh, overall, the governmental funds were up over just over a million dollars and the water, water and water construction together were up about $295,000. So, um, positive cash flow happening, um, you know, and a lot of, in a big part, that was due to some very, um, intentional, uh, cost watching, um, by your, by your city hall team and trying to navigate through the economic, culture, and climate that we're in. Um, it's been, there's been so much uncertainty. And so it's nice to see that we're not seeing huge losses. Um, but I know that also came at a price, you know, so, um, so good news there. I know that's probably not going to be the way it is forever. So. Uh, does anybody have any questions about the financial statements themselves?
No, I didn't. I I I sat down with you when you went through them and I, um, I I had a lot of questions at the time and and you were right on top of things and answered them, um, very satisfactorily. And it sounds like Nina's got her handle on the things that weren't working before. Yeah. So that going forward, she is going to have a little bit of an easier time. Is that right, Nina? Let us hope.
Come to the light at the end of the tunnel. It's painful, but, um, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions or, um, comments for uh, regarding the, um, the audit? So we'll see you again in December. Is that right?
That's always the hope.
Thank you so much.
And in person, hopefully too, so.
That would be fun.
We much prefer that.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you so much.
And what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, thanks, Nina, also for being here. Do you have something else?
I do have one final piece, though, and that is the plan of action that was included in the council packet. And so that is the city's response to the findings of the audit where um, council has the opportunity to acknowledge the deficiencies that were found and to be presented with our solution to alleviate those deficiencies. So as Corey stated, um, we had two, and the first was the materially misstated items in the financial statements. Um, and again, as she stated, they were a direct result of the conversion. And we believe that the issues have been relieved and that moving forward into this fiscal year will not be an issue. The second deficiency is the one that we always get, which is a lack of segregation of duties. And, um, with a city of our size, it's just not possible for us to fully segregate all of our duties. But one of the plus sides of the software is that we have been able to mitigate that in every area except for payroll. Um, and we'll never be able to do that because we only have one person who processes payroll, and that's me. So, um, unless we end up with a second finance person, we'll always have that, but that's common in a lot of cities. So with that, I, um, ask council to approve a motion to or make a motion to approve the plan of action. Unless there's question.
Is there a motion to approve the plan of action to, um, yeah, accept the deficiencies?
Yes, I I was lucky enough to be in the meeting with the mayor and was asked the questions, and I certainly concur and would make that proposal to accept the, uh, uh, line of action to, she needed to move forward.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks, Brad. I I'm just going to do a roll call and ask each one of you to vote yea or nay. Um, Jerry?
Yes, yes.
And Brad?
Yes.
And Jenna?
Yes.
And Lynn, Linda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Again, thank you, Nina, for all you do.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, next on the agenda is the, um, doom grading moratorium. Um, the renewal. And this is actually a public hearing. And as it is my first, I'm going to ask you to kind of bear with me. Um, we start with the council discussion, which will be led by Leila. The action that's requested is that the city council is being asked to adopt findings supporting a continuation of a view grading moratorium as defined in the Manzanita Zoning Ordinance 95.4, section 3.085, for a period of six months to allow the city to continue making progress toward updating. After the discussion, we will open up to public comment. So Leila, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. So included is staff report in the packet. I think all of you have read that. And what we're doing today is extending the moratorium. So when we put the moratorium in place, it was for a three-month, 90-day period of time. The ORS allows us to renew that moratorium for a period of six months, assuming that we're making progress towards addressing the issue. So the findings that are included in the packet kind of outline the, um, the next steps. Uh, the city is working on, I'm working on executing a contract with a new current planner who will be working with us to move forward with next steps to update the comprehensive plan. The update of the comprehensive plan is sort of the essential component that we need to do to update Goal 18 and to determine if view grading is something that the city wishes to continue doing or not. So that's going to take a significant, um, amount of outreach and engagement with our local community once we kick off the comp plan process. So, uh, the findings have been drafted, reviewed, and approved by the city attorney. Um, and tonight I am asking council to, um, approve those findings to extend the moratorium for another six months.
Okay, before we go to that, is there any, um, public comment regarding this issue? I see a hand.
Yes, we have, um, Ken and Ben Rosen. Go ahead.
And your address, please? Uh, Kim? We're not hearing you, Kim.
Am I, am I there?
There you are. We hear you. Could you provide your address, please?
Yes, I will. 280 Edmund Lane. And I was one of those people who found that weird little sign out on the dunes back in December and was really dismayed that there was no moratorium in place at the time, that things were all kind of done on a handshake deal. And city manager, Amen, has changed that. And I'm so happy to see this back when it should be so that it's like a reminder that this isn't gone away. It's still there and we're still moving forward to make a real moratorium forever. For those of us who feel that way. And I just, I just feel really happy. I've been able to talk to some of the people who don't feel that way. And I think that's valuable. And I think there's some kind of middle ground. And we're not there yet. And updating the plan, um, for Goal 18 is the way to get there. And I'm really, really pleased to see this just pop up on the agenda at a public meeting uh, when that wasn't the case in the past. So thank you, city manager Amen, for doing that and making sure. I know it was expensive. I know it took a lot of time and energy, and I so appreciate it. And I know so many people in town do too. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Kim. Well said. Very well said. All right, we have Sandy Wood next. Go ahead. Sandy?
I'm unmuted now.
You are unmuted. Can you give us your address, Sandy?
Uh, 120 B Swacks.
Okay, thank you.
And I was another one of the ones that got the signatures, the letters written to the city council. And then all the letters and testifying for the state. And I'm very much opposed to doom grading for view for multitudes of reasons that we all know and love. So that's my comment.
Okay. Well, thank you for dialing in and sharing your sharing your efforts. It's, um, you have, there's a lot of support, a lot of people that are like-minded on this issue. Um, are there any other hands, Nancy?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Okay, thank you. Um, it looks like we're ready to make a motion to support a continuation of a view grading moratorium as defined in the Manzanita Zoning Ordinance 95.4, section 3.085, for a period of six months. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved and seconded?
Second.
Okay, and roll call. Nancy, would you do a roll call, please?
Okay. All right, Linda? I guess. Okay, uh, hold on. Um, Jerry?
Yes.
Um, Jenna?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Deb?
Yes. So we have a passage unanimously.
Sorry, may I have one question to Leila? Um, looking at the six-month term limit, is it possible to do it longer? Is that? That is, because it's wrapped up in the.
No, statute says every six months.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good question.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is the policy adopting indirect cost methodology. And, um, that was shown as a tentative, but, um, it sounded to me like in the work session that we were ready to bring it forward. Is there any discussion on this before we put it to a vote? Okay, so we need a resolution to adopt an indirect cost methodology. Is there a motion?
Uh, so moved. I thought we had one. Are we going to be specific about it or is it in general? Leila?
There is one in the packet. Uh, it's not numbered, so you would just read the title.
Okay.
I'm not seeing that one in front of me.
Here, I can put it up on the screen.
Could you do that, please? Thank you. So it's, um, a resolution of the city council for the city of Manzanita adopting materials and services indirect cost methodology for the purpose of determining transfers from enterprise funds to the general fund for administrative overhead services. Um, it looks like we have hands before, we have a hand up before we go to vote. Hmm, Nancy, I saw a hand at one point.
I thought we didn't, uh, have public comment for this. Am I incorrect?
Mayor can call on folks for items that are being voted on on the agenda to speak.
Okay.
So it's the discretion of the presiding officer.
Okay.
So we had a hand up.
All right, Shannon. Shannon, stay. Go ahead.
And Shannon, you'll have, uh, five minutes. Shannon, we can't hear you.
Yeah. I think I got it now.
You do. And and can we get your address, please?
889 North Third Street in Manzanita.
All right. Thank you for calling in.
Um, I attended the meeting this afternoon and I'm still confused about the manager's, uh, explanation of the tasks being performed to justify $191,000 being transferred from the water fund to the general fund for three workers at city hall. Right? I'd like a further explanation.
Is there, um, Leila, is there an answer that you can give to that or do we just take comment?
Uh, normally you just take comments and I provided a presentation at the workshop. I've gone over this four or five times. And so I think the answer is in those previous, um, uh, presentations.
Okay, so we will go to the next hand up. Nancy?
And that is our keynote. Go ahead.
Thank you. Randy Kugler, 445 North Avenue in Manzanita. Uh, I had submitted testimony. Thanks, staff, for putting that with the council packet this evening. Those that are interested can spend more time to read that. I'm not going to go over that in any more detail. The question I would like to raise tonight is if we're going to use another city's overhead model, why are we using Warrant? Uh, Warrant describes themselves as a fishing and logging community of 6,300. Um, what about Gearheart? And I I'll bring this up because Gearheart's much closer in size. Pretty large contingent of second homeowners, limited commercial, and they even got a golf course. When I talked to the Gearheart city manager over a year ago on their policy for overhead allocation, uh, indicated that they do zero overhead allocation transfers from their water funds. And the explanation was their council policy was they like to keep as much money in their water fund for projects as possible. Uh, keep their water rates low. Customers seem to like that. The the point being, I like the Gearheart model, but I do believe it does lack in the fact that keeping overhead allocations in very clear manner is a good policy. It's just good practice. But it needs to be about as simple as possible so that you can actually explain the operational reality of how overhead allocation policy works in your particular city. So I'm going to again ask the question, um, you know, when the city gives their own examples of all this behind-the-scenes staff support effort to get water fund-related topics to the city council for meetings and discussion purposes, and a simple fact check can't find any evidence to support that explanation, obviously, it raises questions and continues to raise questions tonight. And when you apply the Warrant and model to the operation of our police and water department, it concludes that you can take five times as much staff support effort and money to provide these two services. I'm not quite sure how that works. Being a city manager and a budget officer for many years, those questions didn't get satisfactory answers tonight. If you've got the answers, I think you would be well-served to explain them in more detail so citizens listening into that conversation can really understand what's going on. We heard at the, uh, workshop meeting again that the auditors have more or less blessed what we're doing here in, uh, Manzanita as far as our overhead allocation. That's really kind of a misrepresentation of what auditors do. Auditors really don't care if you have a Gearhart-type model or a Warranton-type model. You know, the auditor's main job is to ensure that the city doesn't make expenditures outside of its approved and adopted budget. They don't really care what kind of model you have. You don't consult with them prior to adopting an overhead allocation model to see if they'll bless it. It's irrelevant to them. I found it interesting that, uh, there was comments, uh, that no other cities would do a direct cost time sheet analysis. Mr. Glenn Kearns, who is a partner of your own auditor, Acuity LLC. My finance director from Philomena tells me that Mr. Kearns in a previous life, before he formed Acuity LLC, actually did this audit for the city of Philomena. Never had an issue with the way Philomena allocated overhead charges based on a city manager keeping a time sheet to document the direct charges for overhead cost charges.
Okay, Randy, we are at your time. Do you have one final comment? Randy? Do you have a final comment? Okay, all right, we'll move on. Uh, next, Nancy?
Um, Linda Ballard? Go ahead.
Um, my question about the indirect funding had to do with when John Kunkel went through the budget, he identified 10% to 15% of money transfer. And I didn't have a calculator with me today to just, to figure out what the percentage transfer being requested is. So, I'm wondering, I think we need to dig down into the numbers more carefully and give them more scrutiny because I don't know what this percentage is of the requested transfer. It doesn't make sense to me that it would be as large as it is. And I'm thinking that we need to keep as much money in the water fund as we can because we've got big projects coming up. So, I think I would urge the council to vote no on this for right now because we need more detail. And, uh, thank you for the meeting today. It was really, really informative and I appreciate being able to listen in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for calling in, uh, Linda. Next, Carol Kennedy? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Carol.
Hi, Carol.
Can you hear me? Okay, good. I too am concerned regarding the transfer of high amounts of water funds into the city administrative budget. I'm confused regarding the amount of money needed to move from the water fund to the city fund. The police chief, according to what I, information I have, submits 100 invoices each year. The public work, works director submits 230. I do not understand why the staff charge to the police is 38,000 versus 191,000, uh, charged to the water department, more than five times the amount. As I look to the city council to oversee the budget expenses and think through these moves, I am wondering if this discrepancy has been clearly thought through. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling in, Carol. Are there any other hands?
Um, no, Mayor, there's not.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Um, so it looks like we put this to a resolution. Are all council members ready to vote? Yeah, I'm seeing head nods. All right. Um, Leila, I don't have that paper in front of me, but is there a motion to adopt the indirect cost methodology?
Yes.
Okay, and is it seconded?
There was a motion made and seconded. Is that correct, Nancy?
There hasn't been a motion made yet, but I believe there needs to be.
Yes, yeah, there needs to be. Yeah. So, we need a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll move to accept the, uh, recommended, uh, allocation formula.
Okay, and seconded?
A second.
Okay, and then, um, Nancy, would you do a roll call, please? Okay, um, Linda?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Deb? Uh, I'm going to vote no on this one. And I'm voting no because I'm just, um, a real, um, dismayed about the funds in the water department and I'm also a fan of direct costs. So, my vote is no. Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda is the budget committee appointments. And Jerry or Linda, are you going to speak to those?
I'm going to pass the baton to Jerry.
Okay. Uh, there you go, Jerry.
Okay, so, uh, we had a pretty good discussion at the work session today. I reported on the efforts of, uh, the budget collect, uh, budget committee selection committee, which included Linda, myself, uh, Jim Dop from the budget committee, and also as a non-voting, uh, staff participant, Nina Christ, our accounting manager, was part of the team. So, we met on three occasions. We interviewed, uh, eight candidates, uh, all eight, um, had substantial or significant budgeting experience, uh, which is one of our key criteria. Um, the interviews, um, enabled us to, uh, draw a separation between, uh, uh, among the group, uh, that led us to, uh, recommend three, uh, candidates for the budget committee. Uh, we do have to correct a, a little bit of a glitch that occurred. I'm not sure where or when, but we shouldn't be having three vacancies at one time. We should have two vacancies every year and then in the third year, one vacancy. So, in order to correct this, we are recommending that, uh, two of the terms be for three years and one of the terms be for two years. And our recommendation for the three-year terms are current budget committee members, uh, Chip Greening and Catherine Stock. And for the two-year term, we recommend, uh, Kit Keating. And, uh, there was a, a healthy discussion at the work session, uh, this afternoon, uh, that, uh, seemed to indicate there's a broad consensus on, uh, council to, um, proceed with this slate. But we, what I, what I guess was not resolved is do we vote on, uh, each candidate individually or do we vote on them as a slate of three? So, I'll leave that to the will of the council.
I suggest voting for a slate of three.
I agree.
Yeah, I would agree too. So, the council is being?
There's been a resolution. Sorry, there's a resolution for that too.
Right. Uh, oh, for that also? We have to do that separate to accept the slate? I think we need some more discussion on the appointment committee for the budget, um, at a later date. Um, the process. But for tonight, can we go ahead and approve, um, the, the resolution appointing Chip Greening, Catherine Stock, and Kitman Keating? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And seconded?
Second.
And Nancy, would you do a roll call, please?
Um, Linda? Yes. Um, Jerry?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Brad? Brad, you're muted.
Yes.
And Deb?
Yes.
Okay, so congratulations to, uh, Chip and Catherine and Kitman. Um, and would also like to take a minute to thank all of the applicants who applied. It was a, a very impressive, um, group of resumes that I went through. And I'd also like to thank the committee for spending the time to make sure that, uh, you went through all of the interviews and that everyone, um, had a chance to speak. And, uh, it's, it's a, it's an involved process, but appreciate your contribution there. Um, next on the agenda is the planning commission vacancy. Um, in February, the council received a notice of resignation from the planning commissioner, Mr. John Nansen. He felt after nine years of service, it was time to step down. So, I'd like to take a moment and thank him for his years of service dedicated to our community. Serving on a city committee requires a great deal of time and it's not light volunteer service. Uh, Mr. Nansen's resignation has been accepted and with thanks for your time. Regarding a new appointment, I reached out to our legal counsel and asked about the process because the council adopted an amendment to the rules of procedures on appointments, page 23, at the February 8th council meeting. Mr. Walker, the city attorney, recommended this new appointment follow those rules. This means that we will open this up for new applications. We can use the same application as before and Leila will make the public notices, which will include the timeframe for applications. Two counselors are needed to serve on the select committee along with a member of the planning commission, probably Mr. Mannan, since he's been there the longest. Um, and I was hoping, Brad, you would step up and serve on this committee.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay, and I need one other volunteer?
Um, I would like to volunteer.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. The applications will be posted on the city's website and all applicants will be interviewed by the select committee. There will be a ranking of the candidates that will be presented to the mayor prior to any announcements of names. Just a reminder that this is the first time this new process will be employed, so reach out if there are any questions. And we appreciate your patience as we go through this process. Are there any other comments or discussions?
Um, I do have some questions. I know that, um, it probably is best to go through the process again and happy to do that. Um, I would also say I, and this can go through council, I would also be okay with, um, Mayor, if you wanted to appoint Mark Hestner or Brad Berman as they were a, I know we're not using the word shortlist, but they were presented at the last, as the last slate. I would be okay with you appointing one of those members.
Um, I'm going to, um, actually defer back to Mr. Walker and follow the process as it stands.
Okay. Um, I also, and I know we're talking about the liaison process.
Mm-hmm.
On the road. Um, I think it should be a council decision on who is the, the two representative. I just want to make sure that Brad's comfortable.
Sure.
Maybe have a discussion around that rather than, you know?
It is in the rules that the, that the two council members make that choice.
Okay. So, if council agrees that Brad and myself?
All right, well, we, uh, certain, uh, do we need to do a roll call or do we just?
No, I just like to have a little?
I think it's a lovely idea, I think.
Great idea. We thank you for stepping up because we, and you particularly, Jenna, know what's ahead of you on this. Um, so thank you.
Also, um, sorry, to go to who should be on the selection committee from the committee itself. Um, I would propose that, um, the planning commission decide that on their team based on, um, availability.
Sure.
Rather than us appoint?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's fine. And I have not talked with Karen about that. Um, I agree. I think we, they should put someone forward. I, they just have so many new members on that committee.
I think they have, I think Karen Yurka, Lee Hildebrandt, um, and Phil Mannan. I, I think it should be one of those three.
Okay, okay. So, should we just reach out to Karen and ask for a volunteer from the committee?
I'll sort it out. Um, we have a, we should do that in a public meeting, um, just appropriate, be transparent. So, I'll put it on the agenda for the planning commission on the 20th.
Okay, that sounds good. Any other discussion? Comments? Thank you, Jenna. Next is a community agenda request by, um, Linda. And this will, um, require a motion, as I understand it, to adjust the rules of procedures?
Right.
You want to talk to them?
Well, we, we've talked about it twice before. Uh, it has to do with adding a community member suggestion to the agenda. Um, and, uh, I, I think that's a really important thing to do, but we also need some boundary rules for, uh, you, Deb, and for Leila as, as you look at whether a, a, uh, community member's request is something that should come to the level of the, uh, council. I've suggested three, uh, questions to be answered in that. First, does the request rise to the level of broad public, uh, interest? Secondly, is the request clear? Third, what is the purpose or anticipated outcome by adding this item? And fourth, what precedent are we setting by adding the, this item to the agenda? Uh, with those questions answered, I think it'll be a lot easier to determine, uh, what, what requests go, go up to the council agenda.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this?
Well, I agree and I've agreed in the past that some criteria is, uh, necessary. I think if you go back to the example we had earlier tonight where, you know, Karen Small made a, uh, request to be on the agenda. It did not present any of the kinds of issues or concerns or controversies that a previous, uh, agenda request, uh, did raise. Uh, so Leila was able to deal with it in a certain fashion and it turns out it was a fashion that was very, uh, pleasing to Karen. So, that was all good. But a previous request that we dealt with, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, sort of called into question what happens when, uh, the request, uh, is of Leila. Uh, she is the one with the discretion to put it on the agenda or not and, uh, the request is specifically about Leila. What does she do? So, in that case, she reached out to council and, uh, got five of us to weigh in on it. Uh, but I just think that having some kind of criteria to guide the city manager, uh, in those tougher calls that come in, and they do come in. Uh, so, some kind of criteria, I think, is, is, uh, is good. Um, and we've kicked it around a couple of times. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with what Linda's proposed.
Um, am, am I correct that there is something already in place, that there's a process? Um, if somebody wants to be on the agenda, they can submit it? And, um, that way it becomes public record? Uh, and then it's up to one counselor to bring it forward to actual placement on the agenda for the meeting? Is that correct? Is that accurate?
I think that's, uh,
The current process?
It's in the ballpark. No, no, I think there, there are two ways to get on the agenda that I'm aware of, uh, other than, you know, the mayor and the, and the, uh, manager, uh, collaborating on an agenda and putting it together. But in addition to that, which is sort of the normal, uh, course of conduct, uh, a member of the public has the ability to, uh, with two weeks' notice to ask to be put on the agenda, but there's discretion built into the rule that governs that, uh, pathway. The other pathway is for, uh, one particular council member with two weeks' notice to get something on the agenda. So, a citizen can get on the agenda through either mechanism, either directly requesting the city manager or asking a counselor to, uh, forward the, uh, the request on, on behalf of, uh, well, on behalf of the city counselor, actually, but obviously, uh, the constituent would be driving that. So, those are the two pathways. I'm just trying, we're just trying to figure out how to, how to deal with that first pathway where the, the request comes straight from the citizen to the city manager. Um, if it's, if it's always like the Karen Small request, uh, that we heard about earlier today, then no problem. If it's a, uh, different and more delicate and controversial situation, uh, yeah, I think last time around, uh, Leila did the right thing. She turned to all of us and said, what do you think? Uh, but, uh, even we, even the five counselors at that point, had no real criteria to measure against. Uh, we all weighed in, but, but we did it from our gut. We didn't have a, a set of criteria. So, I think that's what we're looking for tonight.
Well, um, uh, we will put it to motion. I can, I can tell you that I, I probably won't vote for it because I, um, I think citizens have a right to speak out and, and I, I am not. I am not comfortable with limiting what they say.
Actually, Mayor, if I could point out, the criteria, the criteria was designed to ensure that the citizens were not arbitrarily rejected by the city manager. It's the opposite of what you're suggesting. We were trying to give some criteria that a request could be measured against so that if a city manager were inclined, not that I believe our current city manager is, but if she were inclined to arbitrarily reject a request, the citizen would have a set of criteria to argue from and to bring it forward, maybe through an individual counselor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate the clarification. So is there a motion then to proceed with the criteria for the community agenda request? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. And Nancy, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Linda?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Deb?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is a discussion about council liaison appointments. In the past, those have been done either by the mayor or the counselor kind of informally. And it came to light when Jerry moved off of the STR committee and Linda moved in and it happened without knowledge to the mayor or other council members, I don't, I don't think. So it seems like it's a, it's a little loose and I would hope that we could nail down a process. Whether it's an appointment or whether there's a procedure or how the council wants to deal with this. Like to hear your thoughts, please.
I can start. I I actually, I like the process. I think that
Which process do you like?
I like the fluidity of the process. The reasoning for that is I think as a team, we kind of will get to know each other, but for the STR between Linda and Jerry, and I guess you two can speak to this better, but with elections in place and Linda running for reelection and Jerry being there, just the fluidity of being able to hand off when I don't know, I just like that. I feel that it's rather, if we put too much rigidity into everything, it makes it hard to to make changes.
It it seems like there should be some predictability that if you go to a meeting, you know who the liaison is going to be. And I understand the flu, the the fluid aspect. I'm not trying to nail something down or make it difficult. It just seems like if this is the way it's going to be and we all agree to it, then that's fine, but it seemed, I know when you passed off to Brad to do the Fourth of July, you did it in a council meeting and you did it in front of us all and and we were aware and Brad accepted. And and so it was, it was public. When Jerry stepped off the STR committee, there was no you know, resignation or discussion. It was just, I mean, maybe there was a discussion that I wasn't a party to, but it just seems like if you're on a committee, it would be good to know who the liaison is going to be the next, you know, from one meeting to the next.
Well, and I I I think it kind of comes with, so I wasn't actually appointed to the parade. No one was ever really appointed. I had just spoke with some of the organizers and was most familiar with the project at that point. And so that's and then my bandwidth. And so, you know, knowing the other counselors and their bandwidth, it was able to to hand that over and I I like the fluidity of being able to do that.
Okay. Jerry, do you want to weigh in?
Well, I mean, I I agree with you. It is a very, it has been a very fluid or informal process. I'll put it that way. Let me speak specifically to the STR committee because that was a conversation between Linda and I before this new council was sworn in. It was a conversation we had in December as as Jenna pointed out. I really couldn't have the conversation while Linda was a candidate for reelection. Once I realized she was reelected, that opened the door to have that conversation. I wanted to back off the STR committee because I was already on the City Hall Project Committee. I was already on the Revenue Diversification Committee. And, you know, quite honestly, I felt like I could hand something off. And Linda was more than happy to to take that on. Now, I think both of us perhaps should have been more clear with the committee itself. But as I recall, there was a meeting or two in in December that I couldn't be at anyway. I don't think, I think Leila and I both were unavailable and we frankly didn't think that meeting was going to happen. That meeting went forward without either myself or the city manager there. So yeah, there was, there was some sloppiness there. I'll certainly cop to that. But I also would like to just underscore that the committee liaison role is just that, where it's just a representative of the council to a committee. It's certainly not a committee member. I assume in a liaison role, the the individual doesn't play, I'm not the, let's correct that a minute. I'm not the liaison to the Revenue Diversification Subcommittee of the Budget Committee. I'm a member of the Subcommittee on Revenue Diversification. The liaison is very much just that. It's a liaison role. It's not that it's not some homework and it's not that it's not some time commitment. But it really is just the bridge between council and the and the and the committee. And so I think that lends itself to having a little bit more of a flexible approach. I'm sort of up the middle on this one because I think what I like about the flexibility is that in the time that I've been on council, it seems to me that whenever this issue has come up, it's been a kind of a collegial conversation among the five about who's got the time, who's got the interest, who's got the expertise? And it's pretty easy to figure out those answers in a in a collegial group. If we can do that, then I think we can keep the fluidity or the flexibility. But we can certainly do better than Linda and I did in December in terms of clearly communicating with the public what we're doing. I don't think the, I don't think the flexibility is the problem here. I think what may have been a problem is that we were not crisp and clean in our our conversation. However, at that point, if you'll beg my forgiveness, at that point, it was two counselors with three new, well, two, three counselors, including Jenna, two new colleagues coming in, two old colleagues going out. It was the holidays. It was, you know, kind of a a weird time of year to be crisp and clear with communications to everybody involved. And so we blew it and I apologize.
Well, okay, so here's, here's what I need to understand. Because I reached out to Joe Newhouse to talk to her about the STR committee. I notified Jerry that I had done that. And then I met with Linda a couple of days later and and I think Linda, you told me that I'm not supposed to be talking with chairpeople on committees, that any conversation I have has to go through the liaison. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. I just, at that point, I, you had not notified me and I didn't know that you'd notified Jerry. So I asked that you let me know when a conversation was going to happen like that and that I would like to be part of that conversation.
Okay. So going
Yeah, but I think just for, just to clarify, I think the conversation you're talking about occurred before you were sworn in.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I can look at my, at my notes, but it was
It was after.
I don't, honestly, I don't believe you and I have had a conversation since you were
No, I, not since, no. You, you had I had notified you that I was, that I had just met Joe for a conversation and and you, and you said that you were probably going to pull out of the STR committee and and that was on a Thursday. And I said, let's talk about it on Sunday and we made a time to get together. But on Friday was the STR committee meeting and Linda showed up as the liaison and and I, I was not privy to that at all. So I guess what I just don't want to, what I don't want to do is be in a position of being blindsided. And I got a lot of things to learn going forward, but I am trying to follow protocols and rules and and clean things up if they're a little sloppy. This one to me feels a little bit sloppy, but if you're all comfortable with having it be fluid and we are all apprised of who's a liaison for what committee. I mean, I think that's the main thing. That's the purpose.
So I think the easy, I think the easy way to go about it is, you know, if somebody is a committee liaison and they're going to switch or they they don't want to do it anymore, we bring it up at a council meeting and find a new person. I mean, it seems pretty easy.
So I, so I, I have to agree with the mayor and with Jerry both. I think the transition to the STR committee was a little sloppy. It had been something that we had talked about in December. I just, I didn't think, I personally didn't think I'd take the next step that we needed to let everybody know that was kind of a a natural transition, at least for me. But I do think, I think that we should have, we should have brought the mayor into it and we should have announced that at the short-term rental committee. But I will tell you that over the years, over the, the extent of using liaison positions for committees, it's been, it has always been very casual. It's, it has to do with, you know, is there, is there an interest in a council member? Do they have time?
Yeah.
They want to do, you know, so all of those, it's, it is, it's a collegial discussion. And I think we stop on short-term rentals, but I I don't think we should change the flexibility of that process.
That's fine. It's, it's when I went back to look at how appointments were made and it was in the minutes that the mayor had appointed Jerry to the STR committee. I mean, I thought that was the standard operating procedure. So if we're all fine, I I agree with Brad that if you need to step off of a committee for one reason or another, it's, we should all, as as a council, we should all be aware of it and we should step up if our interest is there. So it doesn't sound like we need a motion or a resolution, but maybe just a collegial agreement that we will be courteous going forward. Is that? Is that good enough?
Yep.
Okay, all right. In-person meetings is the next thing on the agenda. We need a motion to set up in-person meetings and we were looking at beginning in April two thousand twenty-three. Work sessions and special sessions will continue to be Zoom unless otherwise requested. We've talked about this before. I don't think there's any surprises here, so we really just need a motion for a resolution.
Actually, I'm going to step in. I I don't think we should go back to in-person meetings. I have a few reasoning, reasons for that. I I don't find them, so far I haven't found them to be efficient. Especially the hybrid where we have speakers, consultants coming in, speaking from a screen and us trying to mute. We don't have a space dedicated, the setup for having in-person meetings at this time. Also, I think, you know, we're, we are, one of our goals is being budget-forward. And the cost of these in-person meetings are going to be a minimum of the seven hundred and thirty-five dollars a meeting plus that one-time fee. So if we split that into twelve, it'd be about a thousand dollars a meeting. And then if you have to, on top of that, pay our consultants to come out and come into those meetings as well, they're different, their, their travel time will be an expense added expense to that. So they could become very expensive. I hope, and I would, I would like to hear from the community, I hope that since we changed our Zoom format, being able to see everyone else on the screen and participate in that way, that that's been a non. What I do think, since, since our council meetings, regular council meetings, workshops, don't have a lot of participation from the audience, meaning it's not like a group session. We're not all talking with the citizens, with the residents. I do think we should take that money and put that forward towards our town halls and and for more community engagement events rather than listening to us have discussions in front of them. And then I also, you know, as our fourth goal that we adopted in January is to have, as council, come up with a better communication strategy. And I think as we move forward that we'll be planning time to have the community be able to reach out to counselors, to sit down with counselors, and that will be the opportunity to be able to interact. So sorry that I was long-winded, but I am voting no. I will be voting no to go back to in-person meetings.
Other discussion?
Well, I, I I think that Jenna makes some very good points. I think realistically, when we have a big turnout on Zoom, it amounts to probably usually something less than 10% of the full-time residential population in Manzanita. However, I do think it's time to go back to public meetings. I regret that we don't have logistically and financially better arrangements in place. I hope the community will bear with us as we try to get the technology to work as good as it can and and get the the need for rental space to be as practical and as affordable as it can be. So I'll, I'll, I'll vote yes, but with reservations, none of the reservations have to do with a desire to continue sitting in my office down in my basement, talking to people on Zoom. But that said, I do think, you know, the other issue that we should bear in mind is that there are going to be occasions when a council member is going to zoom in to a live meeting. So we, I hope that's available.
Right. No, I think, I think the beauty is that we are at a place where we can accommodate in ways that we were not able to do, you know, years ago. And personally, I think there's a lot to be said for in-person meetings and especially collegially. Is, is there a motion for a resolution to return just to in-person meetings on only city council meetings and and keep the work sessions and special sessions on Zoom? Is there a motion?
This point of order, there's no resolution, so it's just a motion.
Motion, right. Okay, thank you. There. Brad? You're going to make a motion?
Yep.
Is there a second? Am I allowed to second? My second? And Nancy, would you take roll call, please?
Okay, Linda?
I, I'm, I am going to vote yes, but reluctantly, only because I really agree with what Jenna said and I think there are a lot of concerns about going back. And that having it on Zoom with everybody knowing who's available is a, is an, is optimum. But I will vote yes for going back.
All right. Jerry?
Yes.
Jenna?
No.
Brad?
Yes.
And Deb?
Yes.
Okay, before we adjourn, I had talked with Leila about adding something on the end of our agendas, a kind of the good, for the good of the order. And open that up to anything that a counselor wants to put forward. I had in my notes that March thirty-first is Manzanita Day and somebody I hope will explain to me what that really means as we get closer. And I also wanted to mention that on, I'm, I'm going to start being either at the Wonder Garden or the library. My first one is going to be on Monday, March thirteenth at ten thirty, from ten thirty to eleven thirty. And if somebody would like at 10:30, from 10:30 to 11:30. And if somebody would like to join me there, have questions, or just sit down and talk, I will make that available and start putting that on a calendar on the website. Linda, you had something about STR survey.
Yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to share. First of all, the STR survey was launched March the 6th, then will run through April 15th. There is a link on the webpage. And if you are on the email list serve for Manzanita, you should have gotten an email. If you're not on the Manzanita list serve, you should be. And the way you do that is at the very top of the, the front of the, of the webpage, there's a signup sheet there. And so I strongly recommend that you sign up, because a lot of our information goes out through email. Of the respondents, oh, we had, we had 200 responses in the first day. The total, as of now, is 350 responses, which is pretty darn good. Of the respondents, 35% have been primary residents, 21% are part-time, 31, and 31 own, and 31% own an STR. The neighborhoods with the highest rate of completion are the beach areas north and south of Lenita, and the area north of Lenita and east of Third. The results can and will be separated by full-time, part-time, STR owners, et cetera. So we're going to, we're going to be able to, to segment those. We are not sharing other results at this point, because we, there's a lot of work that needs to be done before we can refer any other kind of data issues. The committee will be focused on analyzing the survey coming up the next two months.
How long is that survey open?
It's open until April 15th. And encourage everyone to take it. We, we'd like you to just take it once, but the more people that take it, the better sense we'll get of what's kind of the community feelings about short term rentals. And we're really, we're really looking to get a good read on that. I think the fact that we've had 350 responses as of today is, is really good. So I think it's out there. But the more you can get other people to take this, the survey, the better.
Linda, I had a question about, from a couple of people who are not computer savvy. And I think there was an, is there a paper option?
Yes. So in the, in the email that went out, we give you a telephone number, which is actually Nancy's number.
Okay.
She will make sure that you get a paper survey.
Okay.
And if you have any questions that, that potentially Nancy cannot answer, Joe Newhouse has agreed to respond to any questions that may come up over the process. So if you're having trouble doing it, we'll get you to Joe.
Okay. Any other comments? Is that it, Linda?
Nope, I got some more. But if there are any other comments on STRs, I think now's the time to, to, to ask. I, I am really impressed with this short-term rental task force. They're a good group. They are really committed. They're working hard. They're working collegially, which I think is really important. And it is very clear that they want to understand how the community feels about livability in short-term rentals. They also responded very positively to the input, particularly Jerry and Brad, in terms of making sure that it's balanced. And I think some of the statements at the, I can't remember what they say, but it's something like, we really want your input, and hopefully, out of this input, we'll be able to develop policies that will impact the livability of the community based on the input we're getting from the surveys. So I'm really enthusiastic about where we are right now, particularly under Joe's leadership. I think it's been extraordinary. So that's all I have on short-term rentals.
She was moving to an April date to have survey results. And it seemed like in something she sent out, that might be premature, maybe she was hoping to move the results back to May? Is that?
Well, they're, they're shutting, they're closing the, the
April 15.
April 15. And it will be, potentially, we might have an initial feedback in May, potentially. But she, she planned on at least a two-month period of time to
Okay. Okay. That's what I was wondering.
I, I think, I think what we've, what we've done is, is, what they've done as a team, is they've responded very quickly to getting the survey done, which is a big task, and then making sure that it's out. And then they want to make sure that they evaluate the, the responses very carefully.
Okay. All right.
Second, the last thing.
Okay.
In, in April is Leila's review. And I will be sending out to each of you on March the 20th, a performance review form. I'd like you to fill it out and get it back to me by the 27th. And then I'm assuming we'll have an executive session in April to go over Leila's performance review.
Good to know.
And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. You covered a lot of territory. Leila, do you have anything to add before we adjourn? Anybody else? Brad, how's the Fourth of July parade coming?
It's coming. It's a few obstacles, but I think they'll all get sorted out.
Yeah. I signed something so that we can have some fighter jets flying overhead.
That was, that was a tough one, flying. And still got some insurance issues, a few things that we'll figure out.
Okay. All right.
Got a committed group, so.
Oh, good. Holler if you need help. So we're ready to adjourn the meeting at 7:36. I'd like to thank all the councillors for their time, and Leila, and, and everyone who participated, and all of the citizens who joined us and, and gave us your interest and your opinions and your time. I'd like to ask the council to take a five-minute break, and then we will proceed directly into an executive session. So, meeting is adjourned.